Welcome to the July 27, 2017 business meeting. And I'd like to invite Don to take the roll.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. From County Council this morning, we have Mr. Nate Boderman. And then for our regular clerk of the board, Mary Rathke. So I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Humberson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Well, the first item up is Citizen 08, Pledge of Allegiance. All right, the first up is Citizen Communication and Les Poole.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, with a name like Les Poole, I have so many nicknames that I can't keep track of them all.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Imagine that.
Tell us 50 of them.
Yeah. Well, I could start with Les Paul. That's an old one.
Good band.
Yeah. I could tell you a few others, but we don't have time. It's summer. It's time to take the tie off. And I'm going to be doing that here tomorrow and going to have some fun for a couple of days. And hopefully, everybody is having a good time. And in the middle of it all, there's lots going on, lots of concern about how much it's going to cost for all the promises made at the legislature. I heard last week Commissioner Humberson mentioned that we need to pony up. Folks are feeling like they've ponied up enough and maybe priorities need to change on transportation and some other things. Before I chat about Damascus, I just wanted to mention that a couple of fun things that are coming. Everybody knows our county fair is coming soon. Looking forward to it. Mary will be riding the rodeo. Is that correct? Not this year? But it is a great event, and hopefully, folks can get out and enjoy it. First weekend in August coming up in Gladstone, we have a festival, a lot of fun, good music, and certainly invite folks to that. Another community that I'm involved in because I own property and what's left of it, and that's Damascus. I'm concerned about the future of Damascus because the county inherited a mess. And all through the disincorporation process, I kept asking the same question. The question was simple. Okay, where are we now? What is our plan? And what I've seen is, of course, in the area that growth and pressure's highest and the sewer's closest, we're seeing development and assimilation into Happy Valley. As you get east of there and you get towards the little, what we would call the downtown commercial area, all the same problems are there. And the county's inherited it. I certainly don't hold the county responsible for the uncertainty in Damascus, but since you're governing it now, much of it, it's going to be more and more on your plate. I know that. And what happens out there is awkward because of the history and because it's still inside the growth boundary. And the pressures and the growth and the development are there. So I'll wrap up just by saying that hopefully, we can get more citizen involvement other than a small group driving the process. I see a lot of the same faces that were for disincorporation that are now driving the process out there. And I talked to neighbors down the road or other folks, and they're not sure how to get involved or what can be done. I don't expect the county to go door to door, but anything we can do to plan for Damascus would be great because, again, it's an awkward situation, and it just came with your territory, folks. Thank you much.
Well, one thing you could help with is getting Sunrise back on the radar because...
I promise, I'm working on that. And we're on the same page. Well, and it's seriously my job and everyone else's job to get the message to you folks that we support you doing that. And you bet. You bet. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Well, with that, no more cards, so we're going to move on to reading an adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is to consider the adoption of Zoning and Development Ordinance 264, amendments to the zoning and development ordinance to implement changes to the county's marijuana-related land use regulations. And we have Mr. Nate Boderman from County Council here to talk about this item with you. We also have Jennifer Hughes, Principal Planner, here in the audience as well to answer questions if needed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pleased to be with you here today for the sequel, I guess, to ZDO 264, which is the marijuana-related land use zoning ordinances. This morning, we're recommending adoption of the ordinance in front of you to adopt the previously approved ZDO 264 proposal. The amendments allow concentrate processing in the exclusive farm use and ag forest zones, adds a 100-foot setback for structures used for marijuana edible, topical, and concentrate processing where the use is allowed in the underlying zoning district. It also establishes a 10-acre minimum for permitted marijuana processing and limits each property to one producer for the lot of record, which I'll discuss here in just a moment. We were before you a little over a month ago now, I guess, June 8, with a similar ordinance for your consideration. And at that meeting, the board expressed a desire to have the staff revise the proposed ordinance so that the standards for processing in the exclusive farm use and ag forest zones apply to a single lot of record as opposed to a tract of land. And as you'll recall, the tract of land could include multiple contiguous properties under a single ownership. The study session was held on July 11, and the board directed staff at that time to finalize the ZDO language to reflect the change I just described to the single lot of record. The amendments before you today were approved orally by the board at a May 17 meeting by a vote of 3-0, which affirmed the proposal recommended by the planning commission. And it permitted concentrate processing, again, in the exclusive farm use and ag forest zones. Also added the 100-foot setback for structures, housing, processing activities. And at that time, the board also voted to adopt standards to establish a 10-acre minimum for permitted marijuana processing and to limit each property, again, to only one producer. Staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the board's decision made on May 17 and to implement the direction provided to staff at the study session on July 11. As was the case before, the amendments also ensure consistency with the remainder of the marijuana regulations that we currently have in the zoning and development ordinance, updates references to the state governing bodies in the event that the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana regulatory systems are either merged or changed in the future. And just general housekeeping amendments as we typically do when we bring an ordinance before you. It's staff's recommendation that you approve the ordinance that we proposed for you today. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, you didn't mention the fencing.
The fencing was actually approved a month or two ago in ZDO 263.
Oh, okay.
What we did was we split it out. At the time, you'll probably recall, we had a couple marijuana land use hearings. The fencing standards and a few other proposals were unanimously approved by the board. You deferred consideration of the concentrate processing to a later date, and so that's the limited scope of what you're considering today.
Okay. Ken?
Yes. Before we move forward, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment that this has been a difficult and long road, and we have had to try and balance very diverse viewpoints, if you will, on this issue. And I wanted to thank staff for their hard work and their advice. It's one of those things where you've had to go back to the drawing board on repeated occasions, trying to find some kind of balance between populations that have very different opinions on what we should or shouldn't be doing. And I appreciate the efforts that you have put in, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Paul?
So it sounds to me like what we're doing today is a potpourri of issues around marijuana...
Always starting.
Teed it up. Teed it up. Right? I mean, it sounds like really a number of different elements of the marijuana ordinance, so to speak.
Yeah, I think most of the substantive elements, if you will, of the proposal were approved in ZDO 263. Again, the fencing standards and some other things. Again, what's before you, sort of limited in scope, is the concentrate processing, the setbacks associated with that, and that restriction to only one license per lot of record as opposed to tracks.
And that's the one I really wanted to talk about. So I just want to get clarification because part of me, you know, as I've, over the course of the years we've been working on this, this has not bode well for, in my opinion, for the citizens of Clackamas County. And it's created a lot of hardships in which we have not found resolution towards. So on this one lot of record, how, will that, with certainty, and how do we frame that? I guess, I won't say in a public statement, that's not your job, per se, but I'm just trying to understand this condoizing issue that we've been struggling with. Does it resolve that?
No.
It doesn't because the condoizing issue really goes back to tax lots, the issue with licensing premises and tying that into tax lots. What we're talking about with the one lot of record is a legal unit of land is defined by the county's zoning ordinance. Whether OLCC at the state level will issue multiple licenses, on one lot of record, that's their prerogative that is based in their administrative rules. What we're proposing, what we've done in this particular proposal, is to say one license per lot of record for the processing. And the condoizing issue that's come up more recently has to do with production and growing.
Well, you know, my reluctance is I'm kind of concerned because on one hand, as we, we don't have a lot of control over this. We work within and craft these things within the restraints or the state structure as it is. And then the state somehow makes a change and inadvertently it allows things that we never addressed, that were already not allowed by state, but the state expanded the role or the opportunity, if you will. And it's, I think we're almost in this circular thing, we're trying to keep up, but yet we're trying to regulate and, I think, control or limit. And there have been a lot of false promises or empty promises, and then we're, for example, like, we're not going to allow to grow any more than the market demands. And we already know that 80% apparently, or plus, of what's grown in the state is leaving the state. So we're, so I think we're trying to operate in good faith, I believe, here amongst us. Yet, the state has not fulfilled, number one, the revenue base, the revenue that we're supposed to get, which you never have a got a penny, we all know that, that there's going to, there's going to be enforcement, and that hasn't come to fruition. And part of what we're doing here is an expansion of the industry and also house cleaning to align ourselves with the state, the changes that have been made. And I'm just trying to look for, what's the bright spot in what we're doing here today? I mean, what can we tell our constituents out there that are suffering from the consequences of a local marijuana business? I mean, what's the bright spot here today?
Well, I'll tell you one.
The 100-foot setback?
No, if you have a three-acre lot, a five and a two-acre lot, you can't build a marijuana, you can't build a building on here because you need...
Or processing.
A minimum, oh, for process.
For processing.
You can't process unless you have a minimum lot size. That's one that I think is really important.
Okay.
That's the bright spot that I can say.
But we allowed on 263, processing on EFU in 263, or is that in 264?
Processing is before you today in 264.
264. So that's an expansion. So I'm just, you know, so to say on one hand is a bright spot, I mean, I don't think it is. We're expanding it.
Well, we're limiting the ability to process.
But, well, we're, but it's not allowed today, right? After we do this, it will be allowed, so that's, and then it's a net expansion. You know, it's not as great as it could be, is what you're saying. We could be doing it to allow it on smaller lots, but it's an expansion. So I'm just looking for something, you know, I'm just trying to find enough here that we're doing today that I can support, and I'm not, I think perhaps at the end I'm not. I understand the house cleaning piece, and we can't divide up what we're doing today. So maybe I won't be supporting this because of that. So I'll just be honest with you. So I'm not going to make a big deal out of it. But, you know, this has already, this has already, I think, hurt the county and our citizens, and it's an expansion, so I just don't see enough. And if we're not fixing the condoizing aspect, which is just going out of control, I mean, that, it is, I won't speak to that today, but that is just, it's unacceptable.
I heard there were just two. That's what I heard.
They're pretty sizable. I think it's going to be the demise of those neighbors and that whole area. I don't think that could be very, I just don't see how that's acceptable to the communities like that. And they're just going to go one by one. They're going to be suffering with the consequences of that.
But I think we all feel that. I mean, I know what you're saying, but...
But it's our, it's our, we're in the role and position to rectify it. So I don't want to know the path forward. Is there a path forward to solving that issue? And there's Jennifer, so maybe she has an idea.
I just thought it was time to step up. Jennifer Hughes, Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Division. So I guess just to back up a little bit, yes, what you're doing today is essentially the substantive change is for the sole purpose of permitting concentrate processing with limits in the ag forest and EFU districts. That's all that's really left from the larger package that you initially considered because the fencing and some other minor changes we did, you did under ZDO 263, that's already adopted and in effect. So this is just for concentrate processing. So it is an expansion in that sense because right now you cannot do concentrating, concentrate processing in those two zones. But it is limited because of the minimum lot size, the limit on the number of licenses, and the setback requirements. So it's a balance, I think, as kind of as Commissioner Humberson said in the beginning. And that was, you know, passed by three of you, but two of you were not, you know, not here, so clearly, there could still be some, you know, disagreement in terms of the feeling on the concentrate processing. With regard to the condominium approach, we didn't initially propose anything regarding limiting the number of licenses for growing per property. That wasn't something the board directed us to proceed with when we first started this in the fall of 2016. Could you do that? You could proceed with that. We talked about that at your study session on July 11. And at that point, the direction of the board was not to go, you know, to go that way at this point.
If we do, it will delay all the other things we're trying to do because we have to go through a notification, 13,000, if I remember right, notification, and start the whole process, that process over again.
And you could, you could see an instant flurry of applications to try and beat any perceived deadline.
That's correct as well, and it wouldn't do anything about the existing ones. Yes.
The positive thing, Paul, is that I met with some marijuana growers about the concentrate part, which they want to do, and that would be one of the things we'd be probably considering, extraction, excuse me, part. And our issue really was that we have no ability to require inspections by a fire department, and that is of great concern. I think one of the things we could do is reach out to the marijuana associations, whatever they're called. And there is interest in a voluntary inspection, fire inspection of marijuana grows. So that's something I think we could work from the, you know, within the various organizations. That's the only positive thing I can say.
Well, so I want to, and I want to use an example of what I'm kind of concerned about because I kind of heard this, and it makes great sense. So if I understand right, in order to do concentrates and do it on EFU, you need to be able to produce the product, a certain percentage of the product, on the property, right?
Of the marijuana?
Right.
Yes, 25% of what you process has to be grown on site.
So in essence, frankly, it'd be fair to couch it as, if I only want to do concentrates, I'm almost forced to do a little bit of growing on EFU in order to do my concentrates, right?
That's correct. And although I certainly do not pretend to be an expert on this, anecdotally, I would say there's a desire on the part of existing growers to be able to do their own processing, you know, to be able to integrate that on site as opposed to having to send their product to another processor in an industrial district. So to some extent, I think you will see existing growers who want to, you know, expand to allow the concentrate processing where they're already growing. But you're right, there is a requirement to grow.
So, you know, then that's what I'm kind of, I've heard of at least one case in which, you know, I really don't want to grow.
Okay.
But in order to do the concentrates, you know, it's, and I'm going to buy as much material as I can, but it's not my, I'm not in the, don't really want to grow.
It's allowed in industrial areas.
I understand, oh, I understand that. Oh, I understand. But, but as you know, there's just not a lot of industrial opportunities.
Yeah. We really don't want it in our industrial areas.
Nor do we want it in our, in our, on our farmlands, per se.
So the fire yesterday was hash oil caused.
Really?
Yeah. The fire yesterday that people died in was hash oil.
That's the one in Portland?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's something, we don't, if we had, I really felt that we had some kind of control of the situation, I mean, this greater thing. But as legislature makes changes, it seems to be beyond our control to rein this in. And I think we need to have a serious conversation about some of the options from that memo that we had seen here a while ago to where we're going to take. So I'm, it's quite a ton of gauge interest from my colleagues here on the dais as to, are we going to stop here and say we're done? I know this has been a very painful process. I know that we've got limited resources to continue this, and I know there's just, I have no desire to continue it. I had other ideas that maybe would have, we'd be in a different place today, but that didn't come true, and I'm not here to talk about that, but I just want to know a path forward if we're just going to sit back and just let this spiral out of control. But I don't see us gaining any ground on this at all. It's just expanding beyond our, beyond our control or limit and our ability to respond quick enough.
Well, I don't think it's fair to characterize that we're going to sit back and let it...
I'm just asking if we...
Just go wild.
Well, I'm just going to...
I mean, that's what we're doing today, is we're trying to limit it at any way we can.
Well, we can limit it by voting, by taking that whole concentrate thing out completely, for example, if we truly wanted to limit it. But my specific question is, to my colleagues, or Chair, if you could, I mean, if you could gauge interest as to the condoizing aspect, for example, what do we foresee us having the initiative or will to pursue that, rectifying that?
I have the will. Whether we have the time right now, I mean, I think it should be on the work plan, but the work plan is way behind. And I'm concerned that we're letting a lot of other things kind of fade away that are also important. I guess what we need to determine is how important is this compared to other things? A discussion about the work plan again, but I promised Mike we would get this work plan done. We have all kinds of other issues of concern around the county that a lot of people aren't affected by marijuana grows. So, I mean, I guarantee you I'm concerned. But where we put that in the future, we have to figure that out.
Well, you know, as staff mentioned at our work session, we didn't take the initiative or give them instruction or direction to take the other step. So if we, absent that, then if there's nothing certain, then I think we, at least I need to know that, and I think probably some of the people that are enduring that. I took a call over the weekend from someone who's, still has issues with a fan on illegitimate operation, and yet there's been no law enforcement action or anything happening. And this has been, this is over a year old.
Yeah.
It's over a year.
We got to do something.
And we, I, those are great words. We need to put it to action somehow.
Why is that the sheriff going out there? I mean, are you calling him? Or is it going against the law?
Well, I don't know if it's, I don't know.
Or is it going against the law?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Ken?
Well, I'll reiterate some of the things I've said before, and that is, if there's a code violation, we have code enforcement officers, and they can respond. At this point, they can respond to complaints. And once we see some income from the sale of marijuana, then we'll be hiring someone to actually be assertive in going after code violations. With respect to illegal grows, I'll reiterate what I said before, and that is, that's the job of the sheriff, and I think probably we need to have a discussion with the sheriff about emphasizing that. As far as the issue of extract is concerned, I'm not willing to go any further until we have the authority from the state to thoroughly regulate and inspect. I think that we've gone as far as we should go, and we've spent as much time as we ought to spend on this, because I agree with Chair Bernard, there's a lot of other things on our plate that we need to spend our time on. We did not do the extract because of the explosive nature of that process, but we allowed, or our process potentially of allowing concentrates because you do not have that danger to your neighbors and facilities with this, with concentrate processing. And it's consistent with what's allowed for other products, lavender as an example. And then I think there's something that tends to get lost in the discussion. And I know that people who currently own property are inconvenienced by some of the production facilities. But their rights to do with their land as they see fit apply also to the other people next door who happen to be growing marijuana. They have the same rights under the law to do what they want to do with their land, as long as it's complying with the law. Unfortunately, sometimes that creates a conflict. If you put a hog farm next door to your house, if somebody puts a hog farm next door to your house, I can assure you, it will not be very pleasant, but it's allowed, and they have the right to do that, whether we particularly like it or not. And I'm not enamored with it, but the law applies to everybody equally. And so I think we just need to move forward at this, on what we have in front of us, and then, as far as I'm personally concerned, and I'm just speaking for myself on this, I don't want to go any further until state allows us the kind of authority that we can actually make certain that things that are done are done safe, that are inspected, et cetera. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, I appreciate, appreciate you sharing that, Commissioner. Someone has to speak up for the folks out there that are saying, okay, is a violation here, it's a violation there, you got multiple violations, what's going to happen? And we, I feel some responsibility, or the county should feel some responsibility towards the plight of which those folks are in. And I think it's also good, no matter what practice people are, whether it's in a commercial area or a neighborhood or industrial area, that good neighbors be good neighbors. And when some folks are not good neighbors and there are flagrant violations of that and in the law and the code, and we fund those things. And as you may recall during the budget, when we had, when I posed that question to the sheriff and his staff as far as, are we going to be enforcing some of those things on some of these things? And we didn't get it, we haven't had a clear, clear answer on that. But I think we have an obligation to respond to those. Those are our citizens. It is within our county. It is regulations, maybe this condoizing, maybe we should have foresaw that and captured that when we were working on it, but we didn't. And that's not, no one's fault. I mean, we can't, we can't foresee everything. But I don't think inaction or no plan forward on whether it's enforcement or whether it's the condoizing or these behaviors, something has to be done. And I don't think, I think our citizens deserve an answer or a response or a plan forward on that. I think doing, I think a response, we need to have something more substantive and more certain, other than allowing people to misbehave, because that's just going to allow more people to misbehave.
Tanya?
Yeah, I appreciate this discussion, and I appreciate all of the concerns and positions stated. And I do think it's important that we balance what we need to focus on. I, like Commissioner Savis and the rest of us, are very concerned about oversupply, about too much marijuana. I'm concerned about, like Chair Bernard, you had talked about, you don't want our prime farmland having... having solar panels put over all of our prime farmland. Well, I am concerned about marijuana taking over all of our prime farmland, as well as solar panels. I really like the idea of Clackamas County preserving its heritage and agricultural identity and history and richness, as well as supporting an industry which is up and coming. While this industry, where we have legalization in Oregon and a few other states, we do not have legalization nationally. And I really would support us prioritizing, putting some limits on the condoizing, like Commissioner Savis said, until we get to a place where there's an overall market around the country, and we don't have to risk too much marijuana being grown in Clackamas County that's leaving the state of Oregon, that's a real concern that I have. I don't have the actual numbers, I don't know how much oversupply we have. I don't know if we actually have real good data on that, but anecdotally, I have heard that we have more supply in other states. I do know from our national conferences that this has been an issue in Colorado especially. So, I support what Commissioner Savis is saying. I think back, I don't know if folks have done much time in Phoenix, Arizona, but if you are there in Phoenix, Arizona, and you are at one part of a strip mall, you can probably drive through a strip mall all the way to the other side of the community, because they just paved over so much of it. I mean, I would really hate to see something analogous with too much, too many things happening because we haven't had the foresight to see the consequences down the road. And I would encourage us to study this carefully and really make good decisions.
Yeah, but I think what we're doing here today is actually, you know, we're responding to some of the concerns. And, you know, I, so I met with a marijuana, potential marijuana grower. He told me that the Marijuana Growers Association calculates it at sixty percent leaves the state.
Wow.
AOC says eighty percent, so it's a lot. It's a lot. But OLCC needs to resolve this situation. How, we can do Clackamas County. Clackamas County, by the way, is one of the largest growers in the state. And they're looking at Clackamas County for growing. We can keep that processing part, the concentrator extracts, in other places out of the county. But I am, like you, I'm concerned about solar, taking our great farmland, marijuana taking our great farmland, and with the breadbasket, and that's at risk here. And so is our industrial areas, too. I mean, we have a lot of risks, but.
Well, I just wanted to say, just, well, just think of, I mean, I mentioned, I recall you mentioning that the other day as far as what they said about that. So, here, as you said, you know, you've got a potential grower who might be looking at, you know, setting up shop here in Clackamas County, knowing that the market is sixty percent overproducing currently. Knowing that the market's not going to get locally, or in the state's not going to get any bigger, really. So, why would he be even entertaining the fact to land here if you know you already have an oversupply, right? Unless there's something around the corner that the industry knows that's going to be far more expansive. I mean, it's kind of telling, because if I was in the business of, you know, selling widgets, and I knew the market's oversaturated, I'd probably look at a different business line, knowing that market's saturated. Why would I do that unless I knew that there was something around the corner to change? I think that's, it's very telling, and frankly, it's a little frightening to think about that from the aspect of that, using Commissioner Fisher's strip mall example, you know, if the entire county is lined up at some point in the future with nothing but marijuana operations, it's not the Clackamas County we've come to know.
Yeah, but it's also an attitude, make a quick buck. You know, the market's hot, let's build it, let's make some quick money. And you're going to see them disappearing, too.
I think you're going to see a lot of failing.
There'll be a lot of failing, because it's a lot of money to invest. And the advantage, I guess, on agricultural land is it has other uses.
And I don't want to, I don't really care to bash the industry, that's not my thing. All I'm saying is that it should be compatible and cooperative and collaborative with the rest of the county, its neighbors, its industries, and we should all be good partners, and it should not be a burden or a detriment. And that's, that's, that's the underlying issue here, that's what's unique about this.
All right, so, any other questions or comments? So, ask for a motion to read ZDO 264 by title only, oh, excuse me, Tanya.
Commissioner Savis, you indicated that you were planning to vote no on this. If there was a understanding, a commitment from the board to look into limiting the condoizing, would that make you comfortable with this piece?
Well, I think maybe if we were genuine, what the incentive to be to, that would convince me that we would be forced to do it would be to not adopt it today until we actually include that in the ordinance. So, that would be, that would be a statement and a commitment that, because we know we need to align with the state statutes anyhow, we know that's a piece of business that needs to be done. But to expand it further, or we took out the expansion element, that would also be an incentive. But I don't, I don't, knowing that, I don't want to, I don't want to expand it. But I don't want to have staff have to delay the alignment to the state statutes. So, the compromise, I think that's reasonable, is to simply do the state statute element of that, but I don't know how easy that is to divide up, or if the board's even willing to do that. But currently, I think I'm now convinced it's a no, but I'd be very supportive of opening it back up. But I just, I just need to see a commitment. But I don't want to expand it, that's my concern, I don't want to expand it. And that's what I just see, I don't see enough bright spots in here that I can give any kind of comfort to those who are suffering with what I had referenced earlier. There's nothing here that does that.
I think there are two different issues. I think the condoizing and the issues that we've heard about are different than this issue. This is a very distinct, limited piece of the puzzle. But, I mean, I think it would be advantageous as if we could reach consensus on this important issue and operate as a full board. And I think you do have support on this board of a concern for condoizing. And so, if that's a direction that everyone wants to take to deal with that and to receive your support on this piece of how we deal with concentrates, I think the limitations that are put on this are a positive thing for our community, and it creates policy and direction for what's allowable.
I won't commit to another six months of marijuana, looking at marijuana again, unless I have some, you know, we're struggling to maintain a level of staffing in Mike's department to do the things we need to do in a very growing county. We're going to take six months to look at this again, send out thirteen thousand notifications. We're delaying all those things at least six months or longer. And we have to at some point have some priority, and are we going to? You know, we have a big pressure on Clackamas County coming from Portland and the region to grow. And we have to be ready to address those issues. And we're struggling to get our work done because marijuana's in our face. So, we're going to delay this another six months, maybe to get through this process. And I, I'm committed not to, I mean, I'm more than happy to say this is what the schedule is, let's put it on the list and make it a priority after we get whatever else we're doing done. But we're, our staffing level's a challenge. We hear lots of positive things about what our processing, and when somebody puts in an app, how quick it is, we heard one the other day, which, you know, five weeks versus five months in Portland. But we also hear others that say, you know, Clackamas County's awful on processing, probably because they didn't get what they wanted usually, but, so this is my concern. I mean, I'll be committed to sitting down with Mike and staff and seeing, could we take this piece? How, talking about how important these pieces are, and see if we can move it somewhere. But still, we've got a staffing, I mean, I know Mike says we don't have a staffing issue, but the people in that room where people come in apps, they are busy. They are running around, and we've got to figure out how we're going to address that. So, I mean, I'll commit to sitting down and looking at the plan and seeing if there's something we can do to get it in there quicker. Is there anything we could do in delaying new applications for condoizing? If we said we're going to start the process in one year?
No, I don't think so under the current scenario. I mean, of course, as we've talked about in the past, the opt-out would put a moratorium on any future applications, but of course, that's a whole different process that requires the board pass an ordinance. But again, once you pass an opt-out ordinance, OLCC and OHA are prohibited from issuing any new licenses. And really, this is, this is an issue with the state's definition and how the state defines premises, right? They don't go on lots of record, they go on whatever's defined as the premises, so.
So, what if we asked, what if we wrote a letter to the state requesting that no more than one license be allowed, because we want to work on this issue per lot of record?
You could. I think the issue would potentially be is consistency with OLCC's administrative rules at that point, because again, they need to process applications and licenses consistent with what their administrative rules provide. And their administrative rules provide that they issue licenses, again, based on premises. And if the canopy limits and whatever else is consistent with their administrative rules, and they're not abiding by those, they could be subject to mandamus or other challenge.
All right, Paul?
Well, I know it's summertime, we don't think about snowballs very much in summertime, but this, I think this condoizing thing could be a snowball. I kind of think that the need is, it's more urgent, because this could literally balloon and accelerate at a rate that by the time we react, there's probably no sense in reacting, because it'll be established. So, it's, it's, it's a pretty serious and somewhat an urgent issue. You may recall that during budget, we had a discussion, you and I, I believe, Chair, that, you know, if we actually made adjustments in the budget to free up some funds, you know, that we would be able to adjust those things. And we talked about the work plan and approved the work plan, and you're right, I agree. There are a lot of issues, and the work plan is limited by what staff availability is. But, you know, the other strategy, if we didn't make adjustments in the budget, it would be to tell the administrator to go find the money. And in this case, maybe we find the money to increase the staffing and planning so they can address some of the issues, whether it's the Sunrise Corridor development, or whether it's the McLaughlin area and the marijuana and all those things. But I think this is, I really believe this is a priority, and that it shouldn't be a further detriment or burden to members of our community who, you know, some of them have been lifelong, multi-generational families that are being impacted.
So, the concern wasn't the money, Mike told me, it was finding the people. Imagine all over the state, the growth that's occurring. When I talked to Mike, they have applicants, but, you know, the qualifications of the applicant, it's not like we can find somebody with your qualifications applying when everyone else is out there looking for the same people. That's the challenge that Mike, well, let's talk to Mike about it, and, you know, get some understanding of it.
I'm kind of looking towards the administrator to get his take on what we're discussing here. Is it, is it a staffing, is it financial, is it a matter of, is it a resource labor pool issue? I mean, what's, what are the challenges?
Well, I think it's that we currently have a work program that has been approved by the board that defines the work of the planning department based upon the resources we have there to carry out the work in the work program. If we, if the, if it's, the board is interested in advancing some kind of policy and ordinance proposal about this issue about condoizing, and they'd make it a priority over other items that are in the work program, we'd go back and we'd have to make the adjustments to the work program with the existing resources. Or if the board said, let's find some more resources to carry out the work, well, that's what we'd end up doing. But it's really got to be what the majority direction of the five of you have to say about what work the planning department should undertake, so.
Well, I was thinking more along, I don't want to substitute anything, so I think what we have in the work plan is all good, I don't want to take anything away. So, if we add to, we need more resources, and that's what I'm suggesting. We expand the work plan to do that, and if that, whatever it takes to get that done, I think this, I think this is, this is really important.
Well, the resource is staffing, but by the way, I, my question was, well, could we contract out this process? And the answer was, well, you need somebody who's pretty experienced and knowledgeable and understands city, I mean, county code, to really make that happen. Martha?
Well, I took the words right out of my mouth, that might be really one way to take a look at this, because it isn't going to go away. And my frustration is the state and the legislature really handing us this mess with no concern of any impact that it would have on our rural communities, really. I mean, it's, to me, it's kind of egregious, and I rarely criticize folks, but, you know, this has just been a mess, and I suspect it's increased the black market because they're just sending it out of state. What a nightmare. So, I'm okay with moving forward with this today, because I think we need to, listen, I'm not happy about concentrates anyway. I mean, I do, I, I think that it, for me, you know, if it's being treated like lavender, I get that, and we let one product do it, fine, it doesn't seem to be, it isn't the same, as Ken said, the same level of safety hazard. But of course, it does gall me to feel like we're giving any more, I mean, I've been very clear about how I feel like there's any more of folks an opportunity to expand this. I, I will vote, I can get there today, but I do think that, for good or for ill, we're going to have to find additional resources, and if we need to have a marijuana. Czar? I think we've been. Oh, Mary, okay. So, I kept thinking.
Mary says no way.
Because it really does, it's so typical of the. Of the urban and rural divide, this is such an example of that, just kind of galls me.
Well, the question is, would that create a greater divide by limiting the rural opportunity to grow and process marijuana, or does it make it better?
I don't think it makes it, I don't think it makes it better, I think it's a mind-altering substance. If people want to use it for medicine, then the federal government should legalize it and treat it the way any pharmaceutical, that's what I really think should happen. I understand, so, well, you know, you can't, you can't go get, you know, I can't get blood pressure medication without a prescription, so why should people just be kind of having this, well, it's medicine kind of nonsense, when it isn't a regulated, I don't know. I'm willing to move forward with this today with the understanding that we're not there yet, and my heart goes out to the planning folks, because this is a nightmare for them, too. They don't want to be caught in the marijuana, you know, loop of hell forever here. That's really what this is. And I understand what Commissioner Savis is saying, but I'm okay, I'm okay with, I'm okay with this reluctantly, just to, you know, kind of move forward, but, yeah, I think we got to jump on the condoizing, that's just, I do. So, I would like to see if, Don, if we could, and I'm not sure we can solve it during this business meeting, okay? We need to, we're going to need to have a whole nother discussion. So, that's why I'm kind of like, okay, let's just get her done. Where's Kenny, would love to have me say this, Ken, you're gone, you're the get her done guy, okay? Get her done, not happy about it, oh, well, life is tough. Get her done, not happy about it, oh, well, life is tough and, you know, we're on the line for the decisions, but I do think that we, we can't let it go, you know?
I, I'm, I'm okay with sitting down with Mike and trying to figure out, really, the list again, again, this is the second or third or fourth time.
This is, I know, I know, I mean, this is, this has taken up all of our time, I am so tired of this.
Me too.
I'm so angry at the legislature over this, this, I'm, I'm...
The voters.
Yeah, and the, but, the, you know, well, the urban areas voted for it, not the rural areas, I mean, come on.
That's right.
You know, and that's where the impact is.
But they're sure taking advantage of it now.
Some people are, but they, but what about, but Paul is correct, what about those citizens? They're just, you know, the smell, the noise, sketchy people, come on, really. At least we haven't had an explosion yet here, but, you know, it's happening, already happened in Portland, as you said, you know, so...
We had one in Oregon City.
We did? Oh, great. Wonderful. So there's Mr. Get Her Done coming back. So, so that would be my suggestion, everyone has been so eloquent, you've been so eloquent, Sonya, I love what you have to say, and Paul, I really do appreciate the fact that you kind of bring these things up, because, you know, it makes us, it makes us move ahead, and if you don't feel that you can vote for today, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't, yeah, it's, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping you're okay if I don't, but I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the dialogue, I really do, the fact that we're all dialoguing about this, and I think that's just great. I'll close with this, and, you know, Jim just mentioned something earlier about we're getting pressure to, from the metro region to, you know, take, really take on more density, take on more growth, right? And so if you think about the suburban rural nature of Clackamas County, what we're, I, I think, why we're desired, why, who, who, what is Clackamas County? Who are we? And I think the fabric, the suburban rural aspect of Clackamas County makes it the great place to what it is. And on one hand, you've got the, the, the urban pressures to basically turn into a metropolis, and metropolitanize the suburban areas of Clackamas County who love what they have, they don't want to, they don't want to see that change. And the pressures to move to the rural area are now being walled off with a not-so-desirable industry, the marijuana industry, which is making the rural area ugly as well. So, there are people, you know, and I consider myself one of those people, who, who don't like the way things are shaping up, in the sense that both are threatened. The rural, the quality of life in the rural area is now under this attack, if you will, by some, if you want to look at it that way. And the quality of life and the suburban life, of which Clackamas County is pretty famous for, is now under, under threat of a metropolitan type of style where the view shed goes away and the density increases, and, and all these, all the unfortunate elements of that, that, those are, that, there's not a, there's not a safe harbor for those who want to live in Clackamas County. And that, I think, we're under threat of. I think we have, I think we have a great, awesome county, and I think the, our, our assets, that I just mentioned, that quality of life is something we need to hold on to, because that's what, that's why we have so many people who want to live here. And granted, we're not growing the jobs fast enough, but if we don't preserve what we are, what we do and do well in our quality of life, it's going to be a different county that I don't think is that enticing.
Yep, I, I agree, I mean, I live in a rural area, my neighbor tomorrow could start doing this, and so I, I literally do think about this all the time, and it's a great concern, and I, I hope he doesn't, but I think some of the, some of the concerns, like throwing up a barbed wire fence, well, I have barbed wire fence, throwing up a large fence with barbed wire, razor wire on it is, is a great concern to me, and that is literally just a, around the corner down the street, I could, there is a place that just did that, and there's a big sign across the street that says marijuana grow, pointing at it. So I have great concerns, and I, I totally agree.
That sign's no longer there, and the razor wire's no longer on the fence.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
I drive by it every day on the way here.
Oh, you take that route, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm, by the way, I'm wondering what's happening at that house they just built and why they're clearing the land.
That I don't know.
Anyway, so, all right, so, let's move on, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt zoning and development ordinance...
Do ZDO first?
I'm sorry.
What?
Don't you have to read the ZDO by title only?
You're right.
It'd be the first one.
You're right.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, he jumped it.
My apologies.
Okay, not me.
I move you read ZDO 264 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second to read ZDO 264 by title only.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, I got to vote on it, don't I?
Second?
I, yes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We're only reading the title by title only, right?
Yeah.
So I'll vote, I'll vote yes for that.
All right.
Okay, this is ordinance number ZDO 264, and ordinance amending sections 401, 407, and 841 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
Okay, so I will ask for a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance 264, amendments to the zoning and development ordinance to implement changes to the county's marijuana-related land use regulations as previously approved at the May 17, 2017 land use hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to adopt zoning and development ordinance 264, meaning the amendments to the zoning and development ordinance to implement changes to the county's marijuana-related land use regulations as previously approved at the May 17, 2017 land use hearing. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one comment, this is a reluctant second, I, I am sick to death of all of this nonsense, and I wish we didn't have to be dealing with this, and people weren't being impacted negatively by it. But, I don't know, we've got to, got to do something, it's not perfect.
Yeah, and I, I agree too. I, I think all of us have some reluctance in supporting the, the growth of this industry, but it's here, and I think some of the pieces of this actually do provide some security for, for some folks. I know that one of my neighbors has a couple of lots, he could not now combine and make one, so that's good. Ken?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that for me, this is, should be the end of the road, we, we have gone as far as I believe we should go in accommodating the industry, and I realize that it does have an impact, a negative impact on some people in the area. I'm not as pessimistic about Clackamas County as one of our colleagues might be, but we've spent a lot of time on it, let's move forward and do other things. I don't think we need to make any more changes, and I would, I'm, am concerned that we scratch an itch that doesn't really exist that could cause us to have a flurry of applications we don't want to see. So let's really think about that before we direct staff to do anything else. That said, I'm ready to go.
Yeah, and I, I would commit to having that discussion, though.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Ordinance passes 4-1. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement number 8189 with Coda Inc. for housing assistance and services for residents in alcohol and drug recovery. Approval of an agency service contract with Cascadia Behavior Health Care for assertive community treatment programs. Approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement number 8199 with Coda Inc. for housing assistance and services for residents in alcohol and drug recovery. Approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with the City of Sandy, Sandy Senior and Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents aged 60 and over. Approval of a local grant agreement with the Children's Center for Child Abuse Medical Assessments. Approval of amendment number one of the intergovernmental agreement with Gladstone School District for Kindergarten Partnership Innovation Services. Approval of amendment number two to the subrecipient agreement with Metropolitan Family Services for Family Resource Coordination Services. Approval of amendment number one of the subrecipient grant, sub, subrecipient agreement with Northwest Family Services for Kindergarten Partnership Innovation Services. Approval of amendment number two of the subrecipient agreement with Northwest Family Services for Family Resource Coordination Services. Approval of amendment number one of the subrecipient agreement with Toto Hutos for Kindergarten Partnership Innovation Services. And approval of amendment number two of the subrecipient agreement with Toto Hutos for Family Resource Coordinator Services. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Oregon 213 at Union Mills Road Project. Approval of the supplemental project agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Trolley Trail Bridge Gladstone to Oregon City Project. Approval of a goods and services contract with more excavation for trenchless technology. And approval of a goods and services contract with Armadello Boring for trenchless technology. Under finance, approval of a contract, the contract documents with Johnson Controls for planned services to the central cooling system on the Red Soils Campus. Under community corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County, County Community Corrections and the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for work crew services. Under county council, we have a transfer of a surplus parcel of land located on Salmonberry Drive in the vicinity, vicinity of South End Road. Under the development agency, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Service District Number One to transfer easements for wetland mitigation services and options to purchase property. Under Water Environment Services, approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Water Environment Services and Clackamas County Facilities Management for Maintenance. Approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Water Environment Services and Clackamas County Facilities Management for Maintenance. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Oak Lodge Water District for sanitary sewer and surface water management services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Development Agency to provide wetland mitigation as a component of the Carley Creek Enhancement and Water Quality Project in return for easements and land transfer. Approval of a public improvement contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One, the Tri-City Service District, Water Environment Services and Settler Supply Company for the Tri-City Blower System Upgrade Project. And approval of a public improvement contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Etling Northwest for the Carley Creek Enhancement and Water Quality Project. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Do any commissioners wish, wish to withdraw, withdraw or pull an item from the consent agenda? There ain't none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in second to approve, approve the consent agenda, any further discussion? I just want to say that, you know, sometimes people ask, what does the county do for schools? We do a lot...
Workforce.
A lot of kindergarten stuff, a lot, and, and like you said, workforce, a lot of partnerships with various departments, so we do, do a lot of work with the schools in Clackamas County. Okay, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There ain't none, motion carries. Next is county administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of items for you this morning. One is some good news about our Town Center Courtyards Project, you all, I think, may remember that. This is a project that opened last year near the Clackamas Town Center, it provides 60 units of affordable family housing. The county had contributed some $2.8 million and 21 project-based vouchers to the project. What I can share with you is that the architect for the project, Mr., well, Scott Edwards Architecture, was recently honored for the design of the project. The award comes from the Pacific Coast Builders Conference, and it recognizes projects that improve communities through exceptional concepts in design, planning, and development. The Town Center Courtyards won the Best Affordable Housing Community Award. The facility is designed to be spacious and bright, with units overlooking courtyards where families can socialize and relax. I just wanted to offer congratulations to Scott Edwards Architecture, and it's good to know that the contribution and the work that we invested in this effort means that our voucher, our voucher recipients, excuse me, are residing in a safe, functional, and effective facility, so, good work. And I'd also like to share that our Public and Governmental Affairs team has reached another milestone, our primary Facebook page for the county now has some 5,000 followers, and that, of course, is, helps to reinforce the fact that our county Facebook page has the most followers of any Oregon county on Facebook. So it's more recognition of the great work our Public and Governmental Affairs staff do. I think it's important to know that what we do on Facebook actually reaches more than just the followers, so this is actually touching more than just 5,000 people. So for example, our, one contribution on Facebook about our dog services, free microchipping events, we reached about 35,000 people through that social media announcement. I want to encourage those who are watching the program to follow us on Facebook and stay up to date on what we do here at Clackamas County, our special events, job openings, road closures, and other pertinent news, and just wanted to give a good word and shout out to our hard workers in Public and Governmental Affairs for making all this happen.
Great. Thank you. Sonya, you're up.
Yeah, a couple of things that have been on my mind, and what we do as a county and as county commissioners is look out for the health and welfare of the people that live in our community, and what's happening at the national level with possible repeal of the Affordable Care Act, and it, it's kind of, it comes and it goes, and it gets real scary, and then it kind of subsides, and then it comes back again, and then it goes, and I'm just sharing that concern with us. I'm going to be working with our public affairs and also with Rich Swift, we've been talking about this for quite some time, but looking at, is there something that we need to do here locally to communicate what impacts changes at the federal level will have on us here locally? So that's, that's really been on my mind. And then along the same lines as health and welfare of our community, I've continued my communication with people throughout Clackamas County, and there are just certain themes that keep coming up that are important for us to look at. Transportation, roads, safety, really some serious concerns, and as I just look at our stress levels as a community, and I look at the well-being of all of us, and just getting from one place to another, the increased stress level, increased anxiety, increased discomfort, I am very concerned about the bottlenecks. I just think yesterday, we all, Commissioner Bernard and I were, went out to Kenton Village, and we, I couldn't get there at 1:00, what was it, 1:00 in the afternoon to get in there by 2:00, it was terrible. So when we're talking about caring about the people that live in our community, this is a really serious issue, and I am very thankful for Commissioner Savis and the rest of our commissioners for holding off on signing, on not signing the letter congratulating our legislative leaders regarding the transportation package, while there were so many wonderful things that that transportation package provided, and we support all of those good things, not addressing the bottlenecks is a serious oversight, because we live those every day, and if we want healthy communities, if we care about people, we care about those bottlenecks. So that's been, all of those things have really been on my mind, I'm just sharing, sharing my heart with you, and I know that you all share those concerns, so I'm looking forward to advocating very diligently, strategically, and methodically to get the bottlenecks resolved in all ways that we can possibly approach, so, those are my thoughts.
Hey, Ken?
I don't think there's anybody at the dais that doesn't agree with you on, on that, it's, that it hasn't been addressed for so many years is ridic... That it hasn't been addressed for so many years is ridiculous. And as Commissioner Savis has pointed out a couple of times, the Sunrise Quarter alone, just to get the first portion done, was thirty-seven years. That is ridiculous. So, we do need to advocate as strongly as we can.
Yeah, I was in grade school.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't, but.
You might be a decade there.
It's been a pretty busy week. I had an opportunity to tour the Transition Center, so I'd just like to read what the County Transition Center does. The County Transition Center is the first facility of its kind in Oregon. And I point out that first facility. We do lead this state in many ways, and this is just one of them. And it is a major step forward in reducing our jail population. The Transition Center, located at the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office former south station in Oregon City, is a new all-in-one location providing crucial services to people leaving jail or prison and to those at risk of returning. Its goal is to break patterns and change lives. And as an aside, speaking as someone who worked in this business for many, many years, this is the kind of thing that needs to be done. Otherwise, people simply end up going back to their old neighborhoods, their old haunts, their old habits, and returning to jail. So, these are the kind of services we should be providing. Clients can walk out of our jail upon release across the parking lot and enter the Transition Center to get access to services, including employment and housing assistance, peer mentors, cognitive therapy, mental health and substance abuse assessments, onsite healthcare, bimonthly healthcare enrollment, basic needs, hygiene items, GED courses through Clackamas Community College, and parenting classes through the Northwest Family Services. Transition Center probation officers also conduct reach-ins at the Clackamas County Jail and local prisons, completing risk assessments, developing release plans, and beginning the referral process for clients before they're released. Also had the opportunity to tour the West Lynn Paper Company, and it's been interesting to note that while they, for many, many years, simply kept their heads down and did their jobs and produced their paper and didn't want to be noticed, they are recognizing the changes coming at the falls, and they want to be part of it. And they have vacant facilities that could be made available with some rehabilitation to make their side of the river a contributing part of this whole project, and it's nice to know that they actually are interested in participating. Had the pleasure of joining the Jennings Lodge Community at their picnic the other evening and enjoyed some good food prepared by all of the mostly ladies that I did not need to eat, but sure was good. And last night, I had the honor of swearing in four new members of the Sunrise Water Authority Board, and I appreciated that invitation and the honor accorded me to do that. And then we left and went to the Street of Dreams and looked at all the beautiful houses that I can't afford to buy for my wife. But, we got lucky, and we entered a drawing and won a brand spanking new dishwasher for my wife. So, I guess it's a consolation prize rather than buying her a million and a half dollar home, but I think she's going to be pleased. Thank you. That's all I have, and now the dog.
Aw, Ziggy.
So, this is Ziggy. Ready, set, let's go. Let's go walking, hiking, strolling, on a car ride, you name it, Ziggy is game. Ziggy is a spunky nine-year-old terrier, and despite his age, he still has lots of get-up-and-go. He is social with people, but prefers not to have other dogs or cats in his bubble. He would love to have a home to himself. He walks well on leash and responds to verbal cues. For everything he lacks in size, he will make up for in personality. What are you doing with the rest of your life? Hopefully, going on adventures with Ziggy. For more information about Ziggy and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Paul?
Reminded me of a family member. Ziggy Boo. Ziggy Boo. Yeah. Just wanted to just touch base. First of all, I want to clarify somewhat, apologize to my colleagues that I was given some information that was not quite as accurate as I thought it was. But I think I had mentioned before and at the Park District meeting the other night that the Jennings Lodge people were in pursuit of some, an area to have their picnic, and that they were caught between trying to pay a thousand dollars to use the grassy area of the school, Jenny's, turned out to be the Jennings Lodge School. I got clarification on that anyhow. Or, you know, the parking lot of a church, and I, you know, the way it was framed to me, and I realized that they, when I went to the picnic, along with my, some of my colleagues were also there, that they indeed had a little patch of grass on the church parking lot. And I told Commissioner Humberson, you know, I told you, they told me it was on the parking lot, you know? So, I went up to the lady, and I said, you know, I had shared with the folks, and by the way, anyhow, the thousand-dollar piece in the school district, and turning that down, that was accurate, but obviously, that the parking lot piece was. So, I want to clarify and apologize for, it turned out to be, I was just misinformed, and I had pressed that person who gave me the information about that. So, it was a great picnic. It was great to see some of my neighbors and meet some new ones as well, and I thought it was great. So, I was glad to see that most of us could make that and attend there. I want to follow up to, last week I spoke about tolling and what I learned, that while we were sitting here at our business meeting talking about tolling, that the OTC had charged the region with forming a committee up here in the metro region to study tolling. So, I will only be looking into that. I presume that Clackamas County will have some kind of a role in that, as well as the other counties. And at the EDC meeting, which Commissioner Humberson was there at the earlier part when I was giving the transportation update, quite a conversation ensued. We had a, I think it was a great dialogue we had. And as we relates to tolling, I was expressing that, I've been pressed, everywhere I go, I have to answer those questions. So, I think it would be, I was thinking, how do we, how do we resolve that? We almost need talking points. And then later yesterday, or yesterday afternoon, I had lunch with one of our city councillors who was ready to sign on to the letter, because it was before their city council, and they were just elated that I-205 was funded. I said, whoa, well, actually, let me clarify that, it's not really funded. And they were like, oh, my gosh. So, there's some miscommunication and misunderstanding. So, I think it probably behooves us not to maybe work with ODOT and everyone else to get some talking points as to what it, what it is, tolling is and it is not, and what, and the status of 205, because some people are elated because it's funded, but yet it's not actually funded. So, we think we need to clarify that. So, somehow, we need to come up with a strategy where we can communicate that and have, you know, have ODOT there as well, maybe, to at least share and somewhat what those details are and talk about the committee. But that's my, that's my update as far as that, and that's what I have for today.
Great. Martha?
Gosh, I don't know where to start. I've had just a very interesting past week. I attended the National Association of Counties Conference in Columbus, Ohio, where I presented on behalf of Water and Environment Services at a summit at the national level dealing with resilient counties. And what we really talked about are the collaboratives and the partnerships we have with Water Environment Services and all of our, the folks who work on watersheds, the school systems, our cities, how we, how we manage to really maintain, you know, clean, clean water collaboratively. And I have to say, comparatively speaking, to some of the folks, but what folks are dealing with on the east coast and the Midwest, we have a pretty darn pristine water supply at this point. They are dealing with severe contamination of their watersheds, not only with pharmaceuticals, but with chemicals, materials used for manufacturing, some ag, ag stuff that's contaminating the water. We really have done a good job here of balancing all the various interests in maintaining a clean water supply. So, I was really privileged to be able to present. This is about the second or third time I've been able to present at the national level. Also, I want to give kudos to our Sheriff's Office and Commissioner Savis and our DA, because we also received an award for the Community Livability Program, the Neighborhood Program that we've done, where the community got together to work on crime, zombie houses. We were mentioned in one of the National Association's Genius List for that program. So, I wanted to let folks know, we get a lot of national attention. I went to the Community Economic and Workforce Development Steering Committee, where we obviously work on our national platform, but I want to echo a little bit about something that Sonya said, because you're, we're dealing with healthcare. We also are having very large concerns at the federal level with Community Development Block Grants and also preserving rural development programs in the Farmville. Sonny Purdue, who is our new Secretary of Agriculture, was, he's now Tom Vilsack, who was our previous Department of Ag. He really was incredibly rude to counties. He came out to speak, and he was not on the agenda, because he said he wasn't going to come. Then he decided at the last minute to come. So, of course, our executive team, you know, let the Secretary of Ag, very unhappy with counties, because we are voicing our opinion that the rural economic development programs for the majority of counties in our country is extremely, works well. It helps with housing, it helps with infrastructure, it helps with water. And he was told that our advocacy for that was not welcomed, and actually, and that things were going to be done his way, and we were either with him or against him. And at this point, I have never felt insulted by a national figure, but it was egregious. And again, I don't say this lightly, because normally, you know, rainbows and sunshine and really try to be positive about everything, but I was horrified at that. And the other thing I found out, which I think we should all be concerned about, they had a section on cybersecurity, and they had one of our generals speak on it. And ladies and gentlemen, we are totally non-secure. Russia is, has infiltrated everything. I'm not being a conspiracy theorist. They gave us data that is very, very clear that we are having some insidious activities from a foreign country that isn't always, the people are beautiful, the culture's beautiful, that's not the issue. But in terms of a governance relationship, it is not healthy at all in terms of what they've been doing with our cyberstructure. So, we need to be aware of that. We need to hold the current administration accountable for lots of these different things. My other concern is when they talk about infrastructure, they're talking about privatizing infrastructure and having foreign national companies actually do it, which brings in the whole conversation about what's public, what's private, and if it's privatized, who owns it and how does it serve the public good? So, thank you all for allowing me the opportunities to go to these, because I know that I have colleagues on the ground here that are holding down the fort in Clackamas, so I can go and get this kind of information and really promote our county nationally and internationally. And I'm going to thank Ken Humbirdston, Guanun County, which is the county that is our sister city, is going to be heading out here. I'll be greeting them down in San Francisco. Then I have to go to my daughter's wedding, which obviously can't miss, and you're going to be taking over, and they will be having a day here. Now, I'm all about exporting and investment, but as I said, public versus private, what's happening at the national level is very, very disturbing. And we cannot allow ourselves as commissioners to be treated like we are idiots and country bumpkins, and that was absolutely the impact that Secretary of Agriculture Purdue certainly evidently thinks that of us. And strong language, but I'm going to fight this tooth and nail, colleagues. Thank you.
Art?
Art, I'm going to give that to somebody else, because, here we go, or Sonya, or Paul, whoever wants it.
Okay. What's his background, dog catching?
You know, sadly enough, he's a veterinarian.
Oh, well, close.
Yeah, pretty much.
He had to catch lots of dogs running around his office. So, I had an opportunity to visit Barlow City Council, and Martha, they'd like to see you.
Good.
They know you.
Oh, yeah.
There's some members. First time they said a county commissioner had ever stopped in.
Oh, they taught my kid, well, the.
No, at the city council meeting.
The city council meeting. The previous mayor taught my kids in high school.
Yeah, he mentioned that. He said he loves you and he'd love to see you.
Oh, okay.
He's now been on city council since the seventies.
Yeah.
But, you know, they have issues too. One thing, they don't want to grow, and there's a marijuana grow across the street just outside the city using city water that they said was not permitted. And so, we're going to, we're going to see if there's anything we can do to help them. They have other concerns with the intersection, ninety-nine E, ninety-nine E, yes. So, you know, he had three things he wanted to talk about, and of course, they were all concerned about why I was there. And I said, well, I'm with the government, I'm here to help, which everyone in government laughs at. And I just said, you know, I, no one, I just wanted to meet you. And but, so, one of the, the guy you're talking about, who was the teacher, history teacher, I believe, he, he had three things that he was very concerned that he wasn't offending me by even mentioning, but heck, that's why I was there. So, it was great. We had an opportunity to meet with the mayor, Paul and I, and city council, and a city councillor of Gladstone. I'm happy to say that our relationships are much improved, and I look forward to the library discussion. I went to Milwaukee yesterday to meet with a developer and the mayor and talk about, you know, kind of what we've been talking about, getting a group together and talking about how we can address rising rents and what are the best tools and gentrification, how we talk about that, because there's nobody who has a solution. I mean, San Francisco's been trying, and, and you can see how successful they've been. New York's been trying, and there's, there's got to be another way to do this, that we can, you know, really do something to protect, control, and enhance our communities at the same time. I also went to West Lynn Paper, and I'll tell you, compared to Blue Heron, this site is way out in the river. It's amazing. It's also up off the water a long ways. It's a huge opportunity, and the owner, the owners, which are Canadian, we like Canadians, don't we? Eh? So, they're, they're interested in doing something to enhance that while keeping the two hundred and fifty people who work there at work. So, it's a huge place. All those places I go into are quite frightening, you know? The years where logs were chopped, ground up, and turned to pulp have less, left some amazing equipment in history, but, which would be very, you know, you could easily enhance, but all the leftover metal and scrap metal and stuff like that is, is, well, there's a fortune in scrap metal. And like he said, that when the scrap metal prices are high, they bring trucks in there and take some out, but they've got years and years of trucking to get that out. Anyway, great place. So, with that, I'm going to move on to small grants first. This year, and as in previous years, we allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for small grants. The goal of small grants is to help the most vulnerable families, seniors, and others, and others to meet their basic needs, such as food, assistance, and abuse prevention. Priorities will be given to projects regarding food, housing, and homelessness prevention. Applications are due by August twenty-first at five P.M. And to apply, fill out the online application at the website on the screen. And to apply, fill out the online application at the website on the screen. And for more information, call Caroline Hill at (503) 655-8261. And hopefully, Kennedy, what's the name of that organization? Kennedy?
Fort Kennedy?
Fort Kennedy, that they get this information. Make sure we send that to them because, you know, some people don't see this stuff. We got to make sure that Fort Kennedy has an opportunity to put in for a grant. And like Sonya said, we went out to the Kenton neighborhood. Very interesting, some of the residents of that facility, some of the residents of the other facility around, it was interesting. It made me feel better about what we're talking about, that the most important thing for people first is the dignity of having a place they can sleep safely, secure their precious goods, and take a shower and go looking for a job. So one of the, one woman mentioned that one of the things that they were all surprised about is that you have more time because you can literally put your stuff away and not have to watch it. And as a group, you do meals together and other things that some people are looking at, art classes and GEDs. And actually, because they can now shower, they can go look for jobs, which they couldn't do before. So, and they're working with people on their resumes and stuff like that. So I feel a lot better about, you know, I used to say, we can do better. Yes, we can do better, but this is a really good start. It's a good start and we have to do something about it. And I know some people are maybe unhappy with the location and it's not the best location that we're considering because I think frankly, we're hiding the issue from others. But it's, we got to start somewhere. And it's temporary and that's important. So, on to the arts and activities in the county. In summer on Green, Son de Cuba, a quartet of musicians from Cuba, Chile, Mexico, and the United States perform salsa, timba, san, merengue, cambia, Latin jazz, and more. Bring a blanket lawn chair and the whole family. And that's Friday, July 28th, 7 to 9, that's tomorrow, right? At Las... Here, Ken. At this place on the screen, which is at, on the premises of Merrill Horshe Community College, community campus, university campus. Marquis El Fresco presents Tartuffe?
Tartuffe.
Tartuffe? Marquis El Fresco promises their renowned use of slapstick, broad physical comedy, shticks, colorful period costumes, plus original music interludes. Everyone is invited to join this free event. Bring blankets, lawn chairs, picnics, and your funny bone. Friday, Sunday, July 28th, Sunday?
Friday through Sunday.
Oh, Friday through, sorry. Through the 30th, 7:00 PM in front of Iron Foundry at George Roger Parks, which is in Lake Oswego. For more information, please visit, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org. And with that, we are adjourned.